Good evening, uh, Maya Pack community. Welcome to another exciting edition of our Thursday night, uh, our Thursday night update from our superintendent and our uh, as we inch closer and closer towards the, uh, the hybrid opening of our schools. Um, we're just gonna continue to keep working hard. Uh, please know that the board and the superintendent and the superintendents and everybody's staff, uh, you know, principals, support staff, everybody's working hard with the, with the plan of getting, getting, getting us going in the hybrid model. So with that, would you put, I'd like a motion to open the meeting?
So move.
Adam.
Second.
Second, thanks Ray, all in favor?
All right.
All right, okay, would you all please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and justice for all. Okay, so without any further ado, I would like to present, uh, our, uh, superintendent of, uh, schools, Mr. Anthony DeCarlo to begin this need, this evening's update, uh, for our commu- Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Mangan. Um, and, uh, I want to take this opportunity to echo, uh, President Mangan's comments. We've really been working very, very hard over the last week. Um, the assistant superintendents who will give their updates in a number of minutes. Um, our, our principals, our leadership team, our unions, we have met, um, constantly over the last week with our unions, really talking about safety readiness and where we're at and how we're ready to open, things we're taking care of. Um, I spoke a number of times and met with, uh, Tom, Tom McMahon, our, uh, president of the MTA. Um, you'll hear some updates, uh, from Mike, um, Tronblay about the, uh, our learning plan and where we're headed. So we're really making a lot of progress, as was mentioned on the spotlight that I filmed on, um, yesterday. There'll be a notice going out tomorrow with, uh, our reopening plan and what that looks like. We've been very thoughtful in that process of the reopening. Um, I believe and I think, uh, the team as well as our, our principals, um, think it's a smart way to go about doing the opening. Uh, back to the school district because as we know, and we keep on hearing and reading this, it's really what I said last week. We just need to follow the science, masks, social distancing, washing our hands. Um, you know, and then sneezing and coughing in our elbows, we need to make sure that we follow that. So you'll be hearing now updates from each one of the assistant superintendents. I'm gonna start with our assistant superintendent for HR, Deborah Legato. She's gonna give the public and the board an overview of some of the numbers and some of the things that we've been working on so that we can be able to, um, get our students in, uh, successfully. Uh, Ms. Legato?
Thank you Superintendent DeCarlo, good evening everyone. Um, a quick update from me, this, the past two weeks, we've reviewed approximately seventy-five, uh, total requests for either workplace accommodations or leaves under the, uh, Family First Act. So the majority of these rece- received were last week or the week before. So, you know, it's taken some time to go through them. But I think that, um, of the seventy-five, forty-four were workplace accommodations. Um, and we've kind of really narrowed those down to just a few that may need to be remote and, and not come into work. Uh, most of them are just PPE, additional, um, protective gear. Then we have thirty-one childcare leaves that we know of. Um, again, as I explained at the last update with childcare leaves, it's very volatile, depends on other school districts and what their plans and hybrid plans look like. So we'll be working through those, um, in this coming week. But, uh, I, I met with principals this week, we spoke a lot about, um, how we would staff, uh, in the event that folks were out. Um, and I think we're making some progress. Obviously, a lot of these things are personnel issues and can't be discussed in public. But, um, I, I think we are making progress and we certainly, um, have, have reviewed a lot and I think we're getting at least close to having, um, having them all reviewed and having some decisions made.
Yeah, and, and we've also been really working hard to building principals as well as Mrs. Legato and our assistant principals to really, um, get more and more, um, permanent subs into each of our buildings. Uh, we've been really working hard, um, the board will be, um, you know, uh, next week, you know, appointing a, a number of permanent subs. And we, we continue to, uh, have rolling interviews to continue to add to those numbers. Because as we know, and I mentioned this yesterday and I mentioned this last week, but I want to reiterate it. This is gonna be a very fluid and adaptable process. There, there are going to be days when, um, there are, you know, teachers out for just illness that may not be COVID-related and we have to cover those classes. So we want to be able to have a pool of substitutes that will be able to, be able to get them into the classes as needed, as well as teacher assistance. So we continue to work hard to, to, to fill those specific areas so that on any given day, we can have as many people available as possible. So I want to thank, thank you, Mrs. Legato.
One thing to that about substitutes, I mean, substitutes will look a little different than they have in the past. Um, due to safety reasons, we don't want to have like per diem substitutes that work in other districts and work in other buildings. That's why we are hiring and really did get a decent pool of permanent substitutes that applied, uh, all certified teachers. We are going to make quite a few appointments on next Thursday, um, and we are continuing to recruit those folks.
Thank you, Ms. Legato, I appreciate it. Now I'm gonna turn it over to our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, Mr. Michael Tronblay. He'll give you a little bit of update on what's happening with our, our learning plan, Mr. Tronblay?
Thank you Superintendent Carlo, good evening members of the Board of Education and to our community members tuning into our Zoom call. So while we remain in remote learning to open the school year, as you know, our eyes and our actions are fixed on ensuring we can bring back students and reopen our schools in the hybrid model as quickly as possible. As mentioned, we have taken time during our remote learning opening to not only focus on details needed to welcome back students safe and staff safely, but also to learn as much as we can during this time period. Because we've never opened schools in a, in a situation like this before. This has meant listening to teachers, building leaders, other stakeholders and regional districts about their struggles, success stories and sugge- suggestions they've had about their approach to instructional settings. As a result, we are currently exploring updated expectations for our hybrid learning plan to ensure that we provide high-quality in-person learning experience to our students and appropriate support for our students who are learning remotely during the hybrid learning model. Uh, one suggestion that we've heard frequently and one best practice that we know of, uh, from our teachers is a need for time to coordinate planning and to engage in continued and ongoing professional learning as they make the transition to teaching this new instructional paradigm. While we have already devoted time to this, this school year, including three superintendents, uh, su- superintendent conference days of professional development, uh, feedback has indicated that we need to consider additional time. We're exploring opportunities to provide this to our teachers and as mentioned numerous times during our reopening communications, we anticipate a need to adjust our calendar to support this important aspect. Again, the purpose of devoting the time to professional learning would be to support our teachers and providing the best possible instructional environment for our students. We're considering structures such as half-day sessions devoted to professional learning and we will communicate these structures as we put them into place. Uh, just as an update to, uh, student choice in terms of their learning mode, their chosen learning modality. Uh, currently we have, uh, approximately three thousand eight hundred and seventy-three students enrolled. Three thousand two hundred and ninety of those students have chosen the hybrid or in-person learning model that constitutes approximately, uh, eighty-four point nine percent of our overall student enrollment. Five hundred and eighty-three students have chosen to learn remote, in the remote-only model that constitutes approximately fifteen percent of our student enrollment. And a total of thirty-eight students in grades K through twelve are enrolled in homeschooling currently for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. We, uh, as schools are used to handing out report cards, we are now getting an additional report card on ourself as a reminder. On September eighth, two thousand twenty, Governor Cuomo announced the launch of the COVID nineteen report card for all school districts. This is an online dashboard which tracks real-time COVID nineteen infections and testing operations of every New York school and school district. Uh, the governor acted, uh, acted by executive order directing schools, local health departments, labs and all testing sites to properly collect and report COVID nineteen testing data for students and staff at each school in New York State, ensuring this act, information can be accurately presented in the online COVID nineteen report card. As schools and districts begin to reopen, uh, local health departments and labs will report this data at the New York State Department of Health uh, and it can be accessed at www.schooldcovidreportcard.health.ny.gov. Uh, they announced this on September eighth and they gave districts approximately four hours to collect data and begin reporting. So we appreciated that timeframe and, uh, we've been updating daily. Uh, Troy Billiu and his responsibilities as COVID nineteen resource officer is taking the lead in this mandate. Ending on a, and a more positive note than a, uh, a COVID nineteen reporting dashboard, I want to provide an update on a very special partnership for, uh, our students, uh, between our district and the Maya Tech, uh, Public Library and how that partnership can benefit our students. Uh, a relationship with the Maya Tech library is sustained by open communication and partnership i- in events such as a yearly administrator's breakfast, which we're all very thankful for to see the, uh, the services that the library provides. While we can't have that breakfast this year, uh, we are continuing meeting to meet with the Maya Tech Public, uh, Library. Recently, uh, we had a, we had a meeting in which we could view ways that are, the library can support our curricular programs such as our elementary literacy program and how we at Maya Tech can support patron usage of the library. The end result of this partnership is to ensure that our students have access to resources and support as they continue their academic journey and help foster a mindset for lifelong learning and the role that a library might play in that. Uh, just a few notes from that meeting that I'd like to share with the public and the board, with the board and our public in our recent meeting. Parents and students are encouraged to attain a library card online by completing a Google form from the website, And the library card will be issued once completed, once that form is completed, uh, by email in approximately one to two days. And anybody fourteen years or, or, or younger can work with a parent to procure that online access to the resources. However, if you're looking to purchase or to, uh, sign up for in-person, uh, access to the library, that has to be done i- at the library to physically check out the materials if you're under fourteen years of age with, with a parent. Once students have access, there are a number of online resources that can support and supplement, not supplant, supplement our, our, our work here i- in Maya Tech, in the, in, in the, in our curricular program. Students will have access to a plethora of eBooks, audiobooks, access to an online tutoring service, a free tutoring service called Help Now, uh, access to online art resources and, uh, a wider range of digital magazines. Uh, just, just an update, since September eighth, the Maya Tech library has been operating at a service level D of its continuing continuation of service plan, meaning that, uh, for the safety of patrons, staff, uh, like occupancies, occupancy is reduced and a limited, limited number of study areas that our students find so, so valuable, uh, are available by appointment. Public seating areas are closed at this time though. Also, the library regrets that while operating at this service level, students cannot be dropped off by the Maya Tech school buses or by their parents. And the community is asked to please visit the library's website at www.meapeclibrary.org for full continuation of service plans or to contact askus@mepeclibrary.org for more information. And as you can see, there are a number of great instructional materials to support student learning and MCS, uh, Maya Tech will continue to collaborate with the Maya Tech Public Library to explore how we can continue to support our students going forward. Um, I'd especially like to thank Michelle Capazella, the Maya Tech Public Library Director for her continued collaboration. That is all I have for an update at this time Superintendent Carlo.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Tronblay. Uh, but I just want to kind of echo and stress something that I think is really important before I turn it over to, uh, Dr. Stowel, who will, will talk to you about, uh, you know, health and safety, uh, technology and a little bit about special education. I think what's really important for the public to understand, this, this hybrid model is very different than what we were accustomed to last year. Last year we were fully remote. What's nice about the hybrid model is that teachers are gonna get to see your son or daughter relatively after two days or three days to really then go over some of the things and, and, and remote learning that were taking place. We didn't have that available. And, you know, we're gonna have small class sizes because we are hybrid, depending on the level, could be ten, eleven, twelve or thirteen students. So they can really take that dedicated time when they have the, the, the students in front of them in person to really, really review, go over in-depth, uh, the learning that has taken place, um, remotely. So that's very, very important. I think that's what Mr. Tronblay is trying to better explain. That those are some of the things that we really are looking forward to, but yet need to work on what that, that transition looks like. Um, Dr. Stow, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Um, and, and one of the things that you're gonna hear Dr. Stow will talk about is we're still waiting and I know I've spoke to the board about this for over a month now. Albany still hasn't come up with some, um, more, um, specific guidance to help us identifying symptoms of COVID. Um, and until that happens, we have to follow the guidelines that we're currently under and, um, you know, it's, it's got an impact on our staff and what that could be as well as our students. Um, and then Dr. Stow will talk about our EZ screener and our, our health screening and temperature checking. So, um, Dr. Stow, over to you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo, good evening, members of the Board of Education, our community members. Uh, I'll start with talking a little bit about some updates about health and safety. As you know, um, health and safety of our students and staff is paramount. Um, I'm happy to report that, um, in terms of protective, uh, personal protective equipment, in terms of what we need to open schools, all things are in, um, not only in, but they are placed in the appropriate, um, locations in order for us to hopefully, um, open in our hybrid model shortly. As you know, we do have some students, um, with more significant disabilities in our full-time special education programs that have been coming in and, and I'm happy to report what's all, uh, dovetail back to at the end about, um, the success of that so far. So let me talk a little bit about, um, health and safety. Um, with respect to, um, um, the EZ screen tool, which is a online application where, um, it's used to assess, um, do self-assessments. This will be for staff and, uh, and students for the days in which they attend, um, in-person instruction. And really what it is, is a tool that, um, identifies either exposure to or symptoms of COVID nineteen. This screening tool must be completed prior to your child coming to school for their in-person learning. And based upon the answers provided, the algorithm, uh, within the app will let you know if your child is, uh, cleared to come to school. Um, if they are instructed to remain home due to the presence of COVID-like symptoms, um, direct exposure to someone who has COVID, um, within the past fourteen days or, or you, or they have traveled to a quarantine state or country in the past fourteen days, um, you will have to report that absence, stay home, um, and please, you know, let the nurse know. Um, and if you're well enough to, to participate in learning, you can still do so. However, um, and I'll get back to it in a minute, as Mr. DeCarlo said, there are some procedures of return to work and return to school. Again, this is all staff and all students coming to the buildings. I will let you know that an additional measure that will ensure that in the event that a student does not complete the, uh, screening tool, um, temperatures will be taken for all students upon arrival. So therefore, we're doing the level of screening that's required by the, by the New York State, um, reopening guidance. Um, what will happen, um, we beta-tested this tool called EZ Screen. Uh, we beta-tested it in the Falls Building with our staff. Um, and now that, um, we know that this tool, um, was rolled out in some other districts previously, uh, an earlier version of it, they made some updates. Uh, there were some, um, some kinks to work out, they've since worked that and, and our, our beta-testing has been good. So what will happen, um, either, um, tomorrow, um, we will be sending out a letter in conjunction with Mr. DeCarlo's update about, um, students and staff, um, rolling this product out and what will happen on Tuesday, uh, nine twenty-two. Uh, those members of staff or students that, uh, attend the Falls Building will get an email and they'll be, um, uh, instructed to, um, download that app or create an account. On Wednesday, nine twenty-three, Lakeview, Austin and former staff and students will be given an email, um, to begin their process. Uh, on Thursday, nine twenty-four, Maya Pack Middle School, staff and students will get an email to begin their process of, of downloading the app or signing in and, and authenticating their account. And on Friday, Maya Pack High School will be. And again, all staff members need to do it every day, all students need to do it every day. But if a student doesn't do it every day, we are taking temperatures. Um, and again, I would ask that you know that you use the email address, uh, if you're a, uh, if you're a, a parent or a guardian. It, it's gonna go to your email address that you've given the school for your emergency contact. I know many of us have multiple emails, please check your emergency contact email you've given the district, also check your spam folder. Um, there is, um, it's pretty easy, we, uh, there will be directions on the email plus a video that our ed tech specialist Jay Zai's created on how to set everything up and as well as directions of if you're having trouble, who can help you. Please note that as we onboard this system, um, um, you know, we'll get back to people as soon as possible if they have difficulties. Now back to what happens if you're asked to stay home or you come to school as a staff member or student, as Mr. DeCarlo alluded to, and you have COVID-like symptoms. Um, the Putnam County Department of Health has indicated that if you're at school or you report symptoms consistent with COVID, that two thi- uh, three things are required, um, for an order to return to school or return to work. Um, one is you have to have, um, a medical evaluation by a medical provider. Two is you have to have a negative COVID test and three is you have to have symptom, symptom resolution, um, in order to return. And if you are COVID positive, you have to have fourteen days in symptom resolution and, 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 um, negative COVID before you, you return. So, so a- as Mr. DeCarlo said, um, there may be some symptoms that are, are consistent with the COVID symptoms, but it may also be consistent with something very common as a common cold or seasonal allergies. Right now, we have no leeway with respect to, um, if you have persistent syndrome, uh, symptoms and you come to school uh, about the return to work or return to school. Um, lastly, in terms of special education, uh, for the community to know, for those members of SEPTO, those parent members of SEPTO, there will be a town hall on the twenty-first, um, I believe at six PM. Um, SEPTO has, um, um, sent out invitations. We're gonna talk a little bit about, um, how the hybrid model, um, impacts students with disabilities, their supports and services. Um, we have wonderful related service providers, special education teachers, um, teaching assistants, um, that will be able to provide to the greatest extent practicable special education supports and services that will, um, work on students' annual goals, also ensure that there's, uh, appropriate support for them, uh, as well as work on some of those foundational skills that they need in order to be successful in the general ed- education curriculum, whether your child is on a remote day or whether your child is on an in-person day. Um, so, uh, I'm looking forward to that, um, and, and certainly, um, please make sure, one of the disclaimers I'll say is if you come to that meeting, um, we cannot discuss, um, uh, personal student questions like of your child because of privacy. Um, but we can talk about in generalities, what will services look like and, and I'm happy, uh, happy we're able to do that. And I thank SEPTO for their partnership and their leadership in our community. So thank you, Mr. DeCarlo, for the opportunity.
You're on mute, Mr. DeCarlo.
Sorry, I'm sorry, and I was, I was on a roll. Uh, I'd like to, superintendent, Ms. Sandra Colesy, who will give you an update. I know the last forty-eight hours in the state of New York has been very, very tumultuous with budgeting and a lot of back and forth and she'll give you the current update on what's happening and she'll talk to you a little bit about, um, food services and us getting ready, uh, for our opening. Ms. Colesy?
Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for having me. So yes, we've been talking a lot about, um, the state aid reductions that we have received thus far. Um, we have had twenty percent reductions in the payments that we receive from the state in this current year to date. Um, based on that, our auditors had suggested and, um, you know, when we deal with our local, our ASBO, our New York State ASBO, that we should reduce our receivables for the nineteen-twenty year, because that has come to a close and we're finishing up with our orders, and reduce that by that twenty percent. Because at the time, it was said that, uh, that, um, you know, barring federal, the state aid pack, state, uh, federal package, that, um, we could see up to twenty percent state aid reductions or even more, um, at that time. And so in, in August, around August twentieth, we received an email from State Ed that said they had begun working on it and that, um, they would, uh, withhold up until the second quarter of twenty twenty-one. So that's where we're at when we met last week. And that amounts to approximately eight hundred thousand dollars for our district just for the, the monies that are receivable for the, from the nineteen-twenty school year. So with that being said, we talked about the additional twenty percent, which would be on this current year state aid, which could be upwards of six to seven million dollars, depending on which payments they hit. So interestingly enough, NICE it, um, instituted a lawsuit yesterday. And after the lawsuit came out, uh, Governor Cuomo and, uh, Robert Muñeca, the budget director for New York State, came out and said, well, we, we, we didn't really say we're gonna hold twenty percent and I'm just paraphrasing right now. Uh, but basically, um, Muñeca said, uh, that, you know, we will better clarify once the voters decide whether or not to reelect President Donald Trump. So I thought that was interesting, that's in one of the articles that I received. Um, that being said, they also said that some of the, uh, school districts that have chosen to lay off staff because of the high impact of their aid, was, it was premature. And, uh, one of the things I just want to say all around is that anybody who's sitting in this position as a, uh, business official in a school district or a superintendent and the other assistant superintendents, we are only looking out to do what's best for the district, but we can only do what's best if we have the funding. So, um, right now, I guess it's up in the air, uh, what will actually be cut or not cut. Uh, but it was said twenty percent before and we're now going to have to take a wait-and-see approach to what's happening. But while we're looking and waiting, please reach out to your representatives. We need this federal aid package if things don't turn around in New York State. So please, tell your friends, if they're not listening, make sure you tell your friends. It's, it, as, as much as I want to say this is good news, I have to temper that because I really don't know what it means. I don't know what, whether we will be cut or what will be cut. I should add that they did talk about if they were cutting, that they would do it on a, uh, wealth basis. So depending on how wealthy your district is, is how they will look at the cuts. Now being that we are just about an average wealth district, if the average is twenty percent, I still feel that's where we'll be. I mean, you know, unless something changes. So please, reach out, uh, put some pressure on, let them know, we are all watching. And, um, uh, obviously, NICE it has now said that too, because they realize without the funding, staffing is what gets hurt and, and it, you know, the, the biggest group is the teachers. So, um, please, reach out. So on to, uh, other news. So for school lunch, for our food service program, the USDA had granted waivers for students under the age of nineteen, not just students, I should any, say anyone under the age of nineteen may receive free lunch. That means that any student in our school district, whether or not approved for free or reduced lunch at this time, may receive free lunch. So we will not be collecting money in schools for lunch at this time. But if you are, uh, a family who would qualify for free and reduced lunch, right now, this program extends to December thirty-first or when funding runs out. So your applications still have to be placed, just like they always were, within the same timeframe so that when it does run out, if you qualify, you then may receive that free lunch. So please, things will be coming home, once everyone gets in school. It's also listed on our website, it's been in the superintendent's update. One thing that's important to know, at the current time, on Mondays and Wednesdays between eleven and twelve-thirty PM at the high school main entrance, you may pick up, uh, food. Mondays will be two meals, Wednesdays three meals, that can be picked up whether or not you're in school. It applies to every person under the age of nineteen years old.
Thank you, Ms. Colesy, I appreciate it. And now let me just give everybody a sports update and then I'll turn it back over to, uh, President Mangan. So, um, as you are aware, um, sports will be starting, um, in Section One on September twenty-ninth. I think I mentioned it before, that'll be, uh, boys and girls varsity and JV, um, soccer at both levels, field hockey, varsity and JV, uh, cross-country. And I'm, I'm happy to say that once again, we are, uh, you know, we are really working hard. We're actually trying to establish a cross-country course up at Maya Pack, um, around the high school so that we can have dual meets and our kids can actually be taking part in that. That's the first time that we've been able to do that in quite a while. Uh, and then girls tennis, um, as was mentioned, uh, last week, um, football, competitive cheer and volleyball will be moved to fall season number two. Modified sports is still up in the air, that is discussion that's being taken place, um, in Section One. There should be some type of a determination probably within the next week or week and a half as to whether or not, uh, modified sports will take place. as to whether or not modified sports will take place this fall. And I want to just echo that, this fall, it's not the entire year. That is what's up for discussion right now in Section One. And we're lucky, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, because the section is allowing us to play, which I think is the right thing. There are many sections in the state of New York that are not having sports this fall. So once again, I know it was in my update on Tuesday. Any student athletes that are out there interested, if you've not signed up, please make sure to do that. You can go onto the athletic website and click on and go onto the portal and register for your specific sport. So President Mangan, I turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo, Superintendent DeCarlo. And thank you all to our assistant superintendents. Again, as I said last week, anxious times. We know we want to get the kids back. We've heard the community, the teachers. Everybody wants the kids back in school. And of course, the Board of Education wants to do it as well. We just make sure that we're doing it the right way. And I'm pretty happy to report that we are doing it the right way, safe. We know the importance of the social-emotional, you know, for well-being of our children. So with that, so we've got some, we've got some housekeeping that we have to do as a school board for our community. So what I'm going to do right now is we're going to executive session. And
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Larry.
Just one quick. This is Dr. Stowe. Those five hundred and ninety-three students who are on full-time remote, do you want them also to fill in that, you know, paperwork even though they're not attending school?
Thank you, Mr. Keen. If they're not attending school, that EZ screen tool, that health screening, they do not have to fill that out. Also, if you're on a hybrid day which has you at home, it's not a day you come into school. You do not have to fill that out on those days that you're not attending in-person physically to school. So thank you for that clarification, and hopefully our letter will clarify that, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stowe. Okay, so with that, so I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session. Could I have a motion, please? Adam, second, please.
Second.
Second, Larry and Ray, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so just to the public. So due to the technical limitations, as you can imagine, it's not going to be possible to end the meeting with a virtual public session. Just please be advised that the Board of Education, we're not going to take any action after the executive, after the executive session, other than ask for a motion, second to move. And then we're just going to adjourn the meeting and ask members to vote motion. A record of this time, the motions are made, and the result of the votes taken will be made by our district clerk Melo LaRaca and included in the minutes of the meeting. So I just wanted to make that clarification that we won't be coming back into public. We're just going to close out of executive. So with that, I'd like to, I'd like to say thank you to the public for joining us this evening. You know, let's keep our fingers crossed, but I think we're moving in the right direction. And we'll have these kids back in school before you know it. And thank you for your patience and all your support. Thank you.